Yeah, all right. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Before I take the role, I just wanted to go over our public participation rules. If you are on Zoom, welcome. And if you wish to make a comment, you can go into the chat and type that you would like to make a comment. And Sue Fawcett, who is graciously overseeing our Zoom participants, will unmute you when I call on you, and she will let me know. And I will call on you, and she will unmute you, and you can speak to us. And also, for anybody in person, you're welcome to participate as well. And just please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Thank you very much for that. I'll take the role. Janice Dykett.
Present.
Timothy West.
Present.
Kelly Hooper.
Present.
Joe Patrowski.
Here.
Amelie Groove.
Present.
And Caroline Squires, for the first time.
Welcome.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add a 5.3 under new business. To elect Jennifer Blay, the L-A-I-S, as part-time middle school and high school nurse.
Thank you. Also, if anybody can't hear me, please just raise your hand. It is a hard... No, first and last name, so whatever you have.
So first and last name.
Oh, yes, if you are on Zoom, can you please give us your first and last name? And if anybody can't hear me, just raise your hand or let Sue know on Zoom, and I will try to speak up louder. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of October 6, 2021, as written or with corrections.
Same note.
Okay. Moved and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? We'll pass it unanimously. Superintendent's report.
So let me start off by welcoming Caroline. Mrs. Bells and I met with her and Amelie last week, and did a little reorientation. And she was good. She gave her homework, and she returned it tonight. And I was going to ask her to talk a little bit about herself, which you're welcome to do, but I then reached out to Amelie and asked her if she, as a veteran representative, if she would give us a little bit of information about it.
Yes, I'm very happy to introduce Caroline. She is super involved. She's a senior class president. She's an NHS officer, WBUX news anchor, student council member, and tennis player, and probably a bunch of things that I don't even know about. She's beloved for her pep and school spirit, which she demonstrates in many ways, including being the emcee for our pep rallies and alternating doing morning announcements with me. And she can always be found cheering on the sidelines of whatever case. Caroline is smart, driven, enthusiastic, and incredibly kind. I'm really excited to work with her and see all the good things that she has done and will do. Welcome.
Welcome, Caroline.
Do you want to add anything? I don't... We said we wouldn't put you on the spot. I want to give you a chance if you want.
No, I think she's going.
Awesome. Thank you, Amelie.
I want it on the record that I didn't put you on the spot.
Yeah, you... I... Whatever. Yeah, let me grab my report here real quickly. So obviously, I sent my report out in advance. And there's some things I now want to make sure I cover additionally. I have a few, a couple of the notes that I've made for myself here. But I do want to say right off the bat that we did have a Zoom meeting with Dr. Shaw, and I talked a little bit about it in my report. But it was... I sent you a separate email, letter, whatever you want to call it, which apparently didn't make the pack. But...
I have a folder right here if you need it.
Yeah, just look at it. So I think the thing that I mostly want to make you aware of is that, related to everything that he said, we are, according to both what he said and I had a meeting, and I put this in my report, about the outbreak meeting with CDC, I don't know what more we could do in terms of we're just going to have to weather the storm. And it's a real challenge, a challenge for everybody. The CDC outbreak people were very complimentary. As Dr. Shaw went through all of the pieces, the, you know, first of all, he was very complimentary of the entire state. You know, what he said means major reputation nationally in terms of our attempt to try and address the issues. He feels leads the nation. Our rates are down. Our protocols are in place. And one thing I put in my report is that he mentioned that we actually have more things in place and more pool testing type of things than California. I thought it was pretty easy. That'll probably change fairly quickly. But, you know, I thought it was pretty cool at the time. I was a little embarrassed because we had to send the questions in advance that one of my colleagues did actually ask him if he had any idea when this was going to be over. He was very gracious in his answer. And he just, you know, basically said there was no way to predict that. And, you know, he talked a little bit about what's coming next. We don't know what's coming next. We're going to have to prepare for that in the same way that we had to deal with H1N1. Obviously, that's a different level. But he was really good. And he basically said that it's so, I guess, far out there in the future that they don't even know what metrics they would use to determine what protocols or what things they need to change. And that ultimately, when and if we get to that point, it will not be led by main CDC or may it'll be coming from the federal CDC, which makes perfect sense. But so I see you guys have some questions. Anyone ask those?
I didn't know if it would be more appropriate when we were talking about COVID stuff.
Yeah, okay. That's great. That's awesome. But it was really... He's so... He's so good. And his presentation was good. He answered the questions. He basically put them in basically two categories. His biggest issue was another issue. The biggest thing he wanted to stress is that he believes that the federal CDC will meet November 1st and 2nd, or 2nd and 3rd, whatever, first part of November. And the approval for administering for 5- to 11-year-olds could happen as soon as that night. So he wants to encourage all the schools to start talking about... Melissa Blakeney just came in. You're going to love to hear this stuff. To start looking at, figuring out a way to coordinate providing vaccinations here at school, particularly for the grade school, because parents are comfortable with our grade school, comfortable here, and that our kids are comfortable here. So, you know, trying to make it as less stressful as possible for the students in doing that. He was very optimistic, that he thinks this is a huge next step, that getting this all under control, all the things that we're doing, plus getting the 5- to 11-year-olds who want to vaccinate is really a critical next step in trying to get this situation under control. But at the same time, he was not being unrealistic. He knows that his variants, and not only the Delta variant, but we don't know what else is coming. And he was, you know, he's very honest about all that stuff. He just encouraged us to stay vigilant. I also wanted to... I sent you all an email this afternoon, and I don't know if it's all good to see it, but basically, looking at the most recent data that was sent out by the main CDC, all of our schools in hell, over 90% vaccinated. And so that's really good. We, you know, we... High school went from 74% last week to over 90% this week. So...
To me, the teachers.
Teachers. Teachers. Teachers, yes. Sorry. Yeah, that's what we don't... We're not reporting on students as by school. I did meet with the association this afternoon. I meet with them every two weeks. And, you know, I think this is no surprise to people that they are still very concerned about the stress level for staff. And they did a survey, provided us with that survey information. I asked them if they would give me a copy of that, which I would then pass on to you guys for some consideration of some future things. You know, the big thing, of course, is time. But, you know, I just said it's hard. I should have said this. Dr. Shaw's very first thing that he said was about how well we have done, particularly as a state, in committing to the notion of five days a week for 100% of our students who want to be here. So in trying to pool test and the masking, the distancing, all of those things that we have in place to try and keep our kids here. And as hard as it's been to deal with all the quarantining and the positive tests that we've had, particularly at the grade school this year, you know, we still have, even in, like I said before, even at the worst of it, from my perspective, at the beginning, there were, you know, up to 60 kids that were kids and teachers who were in quarantine. Then at this, there was 360 that were not in quarantine. And, you know, our primary goal is to try to keep them all here in school as much as we possibly can. So a year ago, we would have been shut down. Those circumstances, when we were under the executive order, we had been shut down. Pool testing? Very, very pleased to tell you all that the grade school for the second week in a row had all of the pools come back negative. Sounds bad when I say I'm happy we're negative. But we are very happy. And I heard from Genie today that the middle school pool testing came back also negative. So that's really awesome. I'll also say that one of the things that I want to pass on is that we had a lot of issues. We had some concerns at the beginning of the year. Still have some concerns. It's not overly corrected. But when students are quarantined, that means they need to stay out of public situations, out of stores, out of rep department things, out of whatever. And that was really problematic for us at the beginning of the year. I think over the last week, we've had four cases at the grade school where we had students who tested positive, but the parents had... They were symptomatic, and the parents kept them home, but required zero contact tracing. That may seem like a really small thing, but it's huge. Because, you know, once they get here and they start interacting with other kids, that puts us in a position where we have to do contact, a lot of contact tracing. I know Melissa was probably very upset that she didn't get to do all that contact tracing. It's really... Yeah, it's what she looks like. So that's kind of my report in a nutshell. There was a lot there. So I sent a lot of information out to you guys. So I'm certainly happy to take the time to answer whatever question. Joe?
I have a quick question. You had mentioned the BLAST for the free and reduced meals.
Oh, yes.
Did you hear anything back?
We got a pretty good response. Mike was keeping me up to speed. Unfortunately, Mike is not here tonight. But the immediate response is pretty good. So I don't know what the final numbers were. Either you... No, nobody knows.
Erin had put in her report that at the time of her writing, I think there were 300 families that she hadn't heard of. I was just wondering how many of those we probably haven't been able to capture.
Well, I don't know that. But we brainstormed this as administrative team last week, and we have some ideas for next year. Not going to really help us this year. I'm really concerned as I put in the BLAST and then put in writing that, you know, we stand to lose up to $200,000 funding. And I don't think people realize... I get it totally from a parental standpoint. I get it. If everybody's free, why do we have to fill out the paperwork? Well, the paperwork isn't just used for free and reduced. It's used for other reasons connected to funding. So if you don't provide that information, you don't get that funding.
Can I just... Do you know if the state's looking to change that? We now... I mean, at the state level, they're saying that lunch is going to be free for kids. So they might need to think of a different way to call, you know, to call back or whatever else, or somehow to get parents' information. Because, you know, I do get it. If everyone's free, why bother? And the state may just be asking. So, yeah, I just wonder if there's any talk at all at the state level about changing that or how to figure out Title I funds? Because I know that comes from there. I don't know.
I haven't heard anything yet.
You're right, Janice. But the big issue may be simply people are tired of giving information to the state, to any government agency. I mean, that's a national thing going on. It's a very serious thing going on. And so what do you do? You know, you think of how many times we give out our personal information. What happens with it? I'll tell you honestly. I don't think it's true today, but it was true two decades ago. The worst place to give it to was the state, who was then selling all those lists. If anybody wanted to buy them, that included social security numbers and everything else. So I'm just saying that I've talked to some people about it.
Have they put their name on it? But do not qualify and return it to school.
No, I don't think so. Because I have to fill what I've got to.
Yeah. And they don't have any personal information on it.
Maybe we need to get that type of information.
But I think we talked about next year, and I don't want to get into a lot of the details, but we talked about the... Joel, what's the name of the programming? The things, the forms that people have to...
So...
Family ID.
Student ID, family ID.
Family ID. This could be one of the things you put on there. But, you know, that's a great question, Janice. I can sort of look into...
That's what we fill out for our parents, just because they need the name of the student and the parents on the form. And then just where it has all the income information, just write "does not qualify" or "do not qualify." And I don't even know if they have to sign it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, you don't need to sign it. You just need to give that very minimal information. It's... I think one of the frustrating things for a lot of parents is if I didn't qualify last year and my income has raised, why am I having to fill this out again? Like, won't qualify again, you know? Right. I think that's frustrating.
I get it. I just don't... They make that connection between that and funding. So, you know, I really thought that we said you can fill this out and we'll get money. If you cannot fill it out, you can increase your taxes. That would incentivize people to do it. But apparently not. Caroline?
Caroline, what's your question? Is your laptop permission forms? Because on family ID, we had a lot of issues. People were not filling it out because it's on family IDs and people. And like, more than half of the school parents didn't fill it out because it's on family ID. And they're like, I don't know how it works. Family ID is also very difficult for people. You know, it's not very hard, but they just don't like to do the extra stuff of doing it online.
Good thing to think about. Absolutely. Joe?
As usual, I didn't have a ballgame on the radio when I was coming home this afternoon, so I was forced to listen to Dr. Shaw's program at 2:00 this afternoon, 2 to 3:00. And this is for the benefit of Melissa. Towards the end of the program, one of the reporters was pretty adamant about saying, "Well, how many students are actually vaccinated?" I mean, the group between 12 and up right now. But they're also concerned about how many do it between 5 and 11. And Dr. Shaw said 56%. And, you know, there's all kinds of ways of looking at that. But one way of looking at it is to say, which is what the reporter did, say, "Shouldn't it be higher?" And so I don't... I'm not saying we have to solve that problem alone. But at that end, as the superintendent said, he didn't have the figures that showed how many kids were. I just think we're headed down that road a little bit.
Anything else to do with the superintendent's report? No? Okay.
So I need to do my appointments. We have Stacy Carey on equipment, grade school, special ed tech 3. Karen Chris, I know your name, is being appointed to be the middle school, high school pool testing assistant, as is Libby Watermer, who's been helping Melissa here at the grade school pool testing assistant. Genie has said right now she feels like we have pretty well covered enough. She's greatly concerned. I'm not sure how Melissa's going to... We haven't had a chance to talk about you. But, right, you know, it really is hard to tell right now because we've only had negative pools. Once we have some positive pools, I know, I know. Then we're going to do a lot more work for all these people.
Sue?
We have a person in Zoom that would like to have... They have a comment on a COVID question at WGS. I don't know if this is the time you'd like to take that or if you'd like to hold that for later.
Do you want to take that now? Or do you want to wait until...
I would rather... Yeah, I would rather have it under old business, return to school protocol.
So I'll write it down, and then we'll come back to that.
Yep, sounds great. Okay. Thank you, Sue. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Well, welcome to Stacy, Karen, and Libby. We're very happy to have you on our team. Just to let you know, you know, we have upcoming elections, and we will have one vacant spot on the school committee, fortunately.
Everybody's staring at you.
They're staring. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I have been contacted by a few people who are interested in serving. I've met with a couple of them. And I know there's also one date on the ballot. So, yes, so it should be an interesting election. And I just wanted to, if any of those people are listening, just thank you to your interest in being on the school committee. And I'm always available to speak with anybody who has any questions in regards to that. Committee reports. Finals.
Did you need to do your report?
I just did.
That wasn't... No update on finals?
Not... Good. So for policy, we just met at 5:00 before this meeting. And we've been reviewing a few lines. We won for second reading and a few for first reading at our next meeting. Negotiations?
Nothing, except I did meet with the association today. They do not exist, we will start negotiating with them until January. But I didn't send out... No. Didn't send out a popular...
We just negotiated.
That was...
Just teachers.
Yeah, three years ago. You're right. Three-year contract. Let's start over again. Time flies.
Anything else for negotiations? Curriculum?
I added all the curriculum updates in my admin report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from the committee at this point around my report.
Any questions? That was a really good report by the way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I just remind for people, especially people listening on Zoom, because all these reports are written. So you may like, wonder, want to see them, whatever. They are all online, available to the public, the actual written reports. So it's part of why we don't cover them here. So if you want to see the Director of Curriculum Instructions report, you can read it. If you want to read any of the administrator's reports, they're all available to any member of the public.
Administrator reports.
They're in the packet.
They're in the packet. But it's so funny you say that because I had written that down to say the same thing. They're so well done. And I really encourage the community to look them up on the website. They're so informative. Really gives you a snapshot of what's going on in our district. They're really well done. So please, please, go look at them. Does anybody have any questions or comments in regards to... I had a couple, mostly just comments. I'm looking forward to a presentation by the middle schoolers that went on field trip to the Historical Society. So I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but I'm just letting you all know, middle schoolers. I'm looking forward to that. Oh, and I had a question for Mr. Campbell. Do you know when the BLAST will go out for teacher conferences to the parents so they know when to contact?
I am going to be sending out a letter.
Oh, you're going to send out a letter?
I'm going to send out a letter because I also want to include the updates to the technology so that they understand that there could be some costs associated with any computers or the damage.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. And then I just wanted to acknowledge that some of our teams, the soccer teams and the field hockey team, they did fundraisers for an area athlete who is seriously ill and is occurring a lot of class. So I just wanted to say, well done. I think that's amazing, supporting the communities around us. And Mr. Stomton had told about that in his report. And that is it for you. To Mr. Campbell with his presentation of our AP scores.
So we're going to ask people to shuffle a little bit so that we can get down on the green.
Does the camera want to go down a little more? Or is that already too low?
So I'm going to stand over here so I can take my mask off. I was told by some staff members that I'm hiding. Here clearly because I have that main accent. Put a mask on, it's just unbearable. So before we go into actually looking at the score, just an explanation of what's transpired over the last couple of years with AP. Spring of 2020 was totally unique for all the students who took an AP exam. With us not being able to bring students into school, the college board had to set up the exams so that they were all online. And what they did, they also restructured the exam for the students. For example, I'm going to use calculus, calculus A-B. There are two sections normally for the AP exam. There's a multiple choice section, and then there is a constructive response section. In 2020, students only received the constructive response. If I remember correctly, the literature exam, there are three writing prompts that students have to respond to normally. In 2020, they responded to the one. So last spring, when we actually had our students 80% of the time, and likewise around the nation, students were in school norm, the college board went back to the normal format. So our students were exposed to having to... Then later, they took the AP Lang test. And then they had three essays, correct?
Yep.
And the math went back to the normal multiple choice and constructive response. So college board did make some accommodations for us because we, as I said, at Winthrop, we were only in school 80% of the time because of Wednesdays. So they allowed us more time. They did three testing windows last year. They said you could test the normal first two weeks, test in the end of May, the last two weeks of May, or the first two weeks in the June. Most of our teachers and students agreed that extra two weeks would be important for them to get prepared for the exam. So with the exception of chemistry, all the other exams were taken during the last two weeks of May. And if I remember correctly, most exams with exception of chemistry and Spanish, where the students were also allowed to take them if they felt more comfortable, they could take them at home. So most of our students did not opt to do that. Let me see, some general comments. So when we get into this, if you remember my report from last year, our scores were way high. And that's because the exam wasn't exactly the same. So our AP scores will see closer to our pre-COVID scores. And you will notice that it's not just OCS, the state, and the nation as well as globally. All the scores came back down to what were normal score ranges. And I'm going to give a kudos to my current seniors. If I look just strictly at numbers, they outperformed the class of 2021 on these exams, so kudos to them. So if we look at the next slide, that will give you some summaries. We had 27 students take at least one AP exam and 27 students represented, just a little over quarter of our come by from junior and senior classes. And 27 students took 54 exams. 14 juniors, 13 seniors participated. The next one, the next bullet, that's huge, three exams, AP exams. We had six who took three AP exams. We had one of those students score a five on each of the exams taken. So woo hoo, that's, that's just amazing. College board will recognize a student if they take a number of exams and they score very well. We had four, we had five students who took four more exams over one, two, or three years and they scored three or greater on three exams. And we also had students who were recognized with AP scholars that went on it because they had four more exams with three or score, scored three or greater on all of their exams. So that's huge. Just kudos again to the junior class, we had two in that category right there. Specific exams last year. Seven exams were administered in the AP calculus. Four of the students did O M P three or four. The average for that group was 2.71. And may have dropped back from 2020, back to pre-COVID, but that number right there is slightly better than five of the previous classes who took the exam under normal conditions. The school average was just slightly less than the state and the global average. We also administered four exams in B C calculus last year and one student scored a three, the others scored two. I didn't put this average, but if you do that out, it comes up here 2.25, which is below the state and global. The way the calculus exam is set up, if you're taking the B C exam, if you score well enough, you can be awarded credit for A B calculus if you didn't earn it the previous year, if you took the A B calculus exam in A B. We had two students, one of whom didn't really pass the score in B C, but did receive this credit for A B, which is awesome. Next class, chemistry. This class, and I didn't share beginning, I should have. College board also allowed students to opt out with any penalty right up to test time. So this one class that was really impacted by this, we had a number of students that chose not to take the exam. So the overall average was 1.6, significantly below the state and global average. English language and composition exam, 10 exams were administered. All 10 scored three or better. Kudos, I mean, that's huge. This, this is a junior class and this, I'm going to guess, if I remember correctly, the order of the exam, this is the first exam we took as a junior. So, but those students all do score, three or better on that exam is huge. And I would say kudos to them and Mrs. Danzuski for that high work. Class average was four and it was the highest in the last six years. Clearly, as you can see, above the state and global averages. Lit and composition, seven exams, four scored three or better. The average was 2.71. That class average was also above the state and global, so kudos to those seniors and may show up with a high work. Psychology exams, four exams were administered, three scored three or better. We had two scores of four, the average was 3.25, second highest in the last six years. The highest was 2020, which was a shorter exam. It came both, both the state and global average was, you know, we did better than those groups. Kudos to those four students and Mrs. Colton. We had the luxury, for two years, Ms. Willef taught at the middle school and students did receive Spanish one in the middle school. So we had students who elected to take AP Spanish last year and both of those students passed the exam. The average was a four, which is higher than the state and the global. So kudos to those two students and Ms. Willef. AP US History exam was the only exam that was administered in June. We had 14 exams given, five of the 14 students scored three or more on the exam. The average was 2.71, higher than the state and the global scores. So kudos to those juniors, where they are juniors, and this is Ms. Allen.
One sophomore.
One sophomore, yep. This year, we took advantage of some opportunities for our students. You can get AP classes through other venues than those that are often rated from high school. We had a student who wanted to take statistics as an AP class. We don't offer it, we offered the dual enrollment. We reached out to Humane Fort Kent and got him enrolled to AP for all, to them. And we also have a student who, because of a, you know, desire to have another dual enrollment class, couldn't get into AP US History, so we used AP for all to Humane Fort Kent to adapt to him as well. And both those students have also signed up to take the exam here in the spring. Next steps, school head even started, I sent an email out to AP teachers and said, I'm going to be doing a presentation for the school committee. I want you to take a look at your scores and give me some thoughts on the things that saw them went well. And I kind of highlighted those things as we went through with their scores. They thought the kids gave it, they were all. They did have some ideas on things that they would like to do differently. They felt that if they took the time to shuffle around some of the major, more complex topics, it would give the chance, give the students a greater time period to have to process and reflect on those concepts. So they thought that would help the students there. AP classroom was another area that the teachers thought that they should engage students in more. AP classroom provides private opportunities for students, will allow the students to do self-progress checks and it also has instructional videos to support the license of classroom. And the last one was to give their students more feedback to increase accountability on specific skills needing to be acquired to be successful on these tests. So we're looking forward to a very successful 2022 exam session. I will tell you, we had 33 students signed up to take 70 exams in the spring. We have several juniors who were taking four AP exam, oh, excuse me, four AP classes. And I have one sitting right there, three she signed up for five, so impressive. Questions? Well, thank you for your opportunity. Go ahead, go.
Thank you, because as you know, performance has been one of those things that we really consider about, as well as opportunities for students to go beyond the classroom. You certainly done that by connecting with the other providers and services, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next presentation.
Thank you.
And the kudos to faculty members.
And the students.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Okay, for old business, we can revisit the return to school protocol?
I'm not even sure where to begin with this. As I mentioned, that we did have a outbreak meeting with the CDC, Melissa, myself and their team. They were very, they were great. They really didn't have, actually I felt it was very, I didn't know what to expect. And I was very, felt really good coming out of the meeting. And we've done a lot of work and I'm somewhat discouraged and look at all the work that we've done and all the positive cases, the number of quarantines we've had to have and all that type of stuff. But they really, the reason for the outbreak meetings, and I was concerned, the reason was to tell us they were shutting us down. When in fact, they were very clear that was not their intent. They were looking at schools and double checking with everybody to see what we had in place for protocol. And they really had no suggestions for us, we're doing everything they asked us to do. Only thing they came up with after, this was not part of that first meeting, but with our, one of our more recent positive tests, they asked that at the grade school, that they recommended that we do our parent teacher conferences for grade three through five remotely, not in person. And so we're just encouraging people to do that and want to be clear about that, that it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation. So if there are parents and or teachers who want to do their parent teacher conferences still face to face, that's permissible, but they strongly encourage us to minimize the number of people who wouldn't be considered part of that group to be in the building as much as possible, so.
Go ahead, Sue. We have a person on Zoom that would like to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
Is that a break for the person to unmute?
Yes. Yes, you can add it there. Hi, can you state your name?
Yeah, my name is Caesar Cord. I'm not a parent, I've got kids at the grade school. And I support the decision what the superintendent just said, the parent teacher conference is remote. We were specifically involved in, I was notified that on Tuesday, we were in contact at the parent teacher conference. First time we've been in school in almost two years. So that was a little upsetting to spend all that time COVID free, being three weeks away from getting vaccines and show up to the school for the first time in almost two years and get it from a teacher. Not pleased about that, but I can understand, it's difficult, everyone's been doing a good job. I'm not all the hundred percent, I don't know the history of everyone's efforts. Still want to thank you, I think overall Winter was doing a good job. I do ask for a change in communication as far as the definition of a close contact. Talk to me as, from the school's definition, is one person in each direction from the child. And we're not getting any communication on the classroom though. What's going on in the classroom, parents need to know. Because the definition of close contact, one position in each direction at lunch and in the classroom, that doesn't even remotely collect the whole picture of what's going on. And the teacher contacts every student, so if it's in a teacher, then obviously the whole classroom should be involved in communication. Like, we could have chosen to keep our kids out of school, you know, for a week. We don't know what's going on in school ever as far as cases. And even, even now, they haven't communicated other than the nurse telling us there were close contacts from the parent teacher. There's still nothing going out to the classroom. I just want to say, I think we should all consider evaluating a group in a classroom setting when if there is a positive case, the whole classroom should be sent to the notes saying, there's a case in the classroom. Not limited to one person in each direction of the student.
Thank you for that.
That's what I'd be considering, please.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that?
Is that the one that raised the hand before?
Yes. And I assume that the comment that the person made that was covered both comments. I'll verify.
Okay.
Anybody else with anything?
I don't, I mean, at this point, I don't think there's anything to consider changing, not anything more we can do. Pool testing is going really well, but like I said, we, it's hard to, it's nice to say that, but we don't really know that because we haven't had any negative, we haven't had any positive pools yet. All of our pools so far have been negative. So I did send out an email to all of you and it does include the students right now, I guess it includes some of the stuff that I, as you know, I'm keeping track of the number of positive cases in the community on a weekly basis that will come out tomorrow, but last week was 21, which is by far, well, I shouldn't say by far, we had one week of 18. But prior to coming back to school, the most in any one week was five. So it's significantly higher, we're not, we're not, we're certainly not going down. At the very, at the very least, we might be plateauing maybe.
Kelly, do you know the total number of students and staff at each school that are involved in the pool testing?
We know it by school, I don't, yeah. Melissa, do you want to talk about, no, grade school?
I think about 25% at the grade school are participating. It's over 30 staff members.
And how, so about 25% of students as well?
Combined.
Sure.
So our pools, they are recommending to have larger pools. So when, first week I did par like pre-K together, kindergarten altogether, so they were like 10 to 15. And then this week I combined pre-K in kindergarten together as one pool. So it was between 20 and 25 students and staff and there were five pools, so it's just over 100. I had a phone call, I signed up three today, parent teacher conferences, some of the teachers have talked about it. Mrs. Stoneton is one of them that had, was just chatting about it and then her, one of the parents called me and asked about it and I, I'm able to sign them up, so they can just call me and I can sign them up verbally. So it's super easy. I do think that it needs to be a little, another, like a, not advertising, because I don't want to advertise it, but I think word of mouth or maybe the Facebook page, the Winter Happenings of just posting like call, you know, talk with the principals or the school nurses. I know Mrs. Randall has put it in hers the past few weeks, every Friday. I know some of the teachers have talked to their parents about it, so I think it's just a word of mouth. I think the more, at this point, the more that participates, the less quarantine. For instance, we had multiple cases, this obviously, as you know, we had seven cases in three days at the grade school. We've had 12 in the last two weeks and 26 totals since school started. And we've had breakthrough cases with vaccinated staff members, just so you're aware.
You know what the numbers are at the high school, Mark?
I know.
I will say that following our conversation to the last meeting, we had the workshop and I went around to all three staffs and I appreciated that conversation because it really gave me a nice message to deliver to the staff and that was basically what I shared with them. what I shared with them, certainly encouraged them to respond to Dr. Shaw's recommendations and other people, that vaccinating is still preferable. You know, but we still don't have anything from President Biden's suggested plan. But I just said to them, based upon our conversation, that we wanted to encourage people to consider being a part of a pool, because we still want to respect their anonymity. So, if they chose, well, they volunteer to jump into a pool, it sounds bad, to join a pool, then they, you know, they, they have that opportunity. I don't know who's vaccinated or not vaccinated, nor do I want to. I'm very pleased that 90% of our staff, over 90% now is vaccinated. And so, I'm hoping that the 10%, that, or just under 10% of people will join their pool and be tested voluntarily, choose to be tested on a weekly basis, which is what the pool testing is doing.
And a question. So, next month, grade school kids start getting vaccinated, will those kids still get close contacts?
Well, it changes, I mean, that's what Dr. Shaw was saying too, it does change the whole game. If you are vaccinated, close contact, you are not required to quarantine.
So, when the grade school kid, they get the shot, they stay?
They will stay, yeah.
After 14 days after their second shot. So, I'm thinking January, right, because it's three weeks after the first shot. So, yes, it's just like our staff members that are fully vaccinated, same thing, and middle school and high schoolers.
So, a comment from the committee says, I think if more parents understood the benefits of their kids being in the pooled testing, a lot more would enroll.
Thank you for that. It's a, excuse me, it is a way to keep the kids in school.
Just thinking back to when my husband and I went through the whole vaccination thing, we definitely went through a period of total sluggishness. And I expect that will probably hit the kids pretty hard, too. Do we already, have we started planning for how to remotely educate those kids if needed?
I think there's been, since beginning, because as I said, and I own some of that in terms of not being prepared, as prepared as we probably should have been from day one, but since then, that's, you know, what people have been hearing up before. Not that specific situation, but it will apply there, because we have, you know, kids that are home, get vaccinated and have to miss school because of the effects of that, then we would have to, will be providing education for them. And again, that's, that was part of, those are the two things I talked to the staff about, what remote learning looks like from a teacher's perspective, you know, what parents can expect. But it looks significantly different at K1, 2 versus high school, where they kind of have chosen to do asynchronous, middle school is somewhere in the middle, you know?
Anything else in regards to this? Sue? We will move along to the school committee evaluation discussion. So, you should all have a copy in your packet. Did everybody have a chance to look this over ahead? Because I know we didn't have a ton of time, but, okay, great. Does anybody have any questions about the first four pages, which is basically a compilation of all of our answers together? As far as what, you know, how I filled it out, you know, questions like that. Did everybody follow that with the check marks? And then, the next pages coincide with those forms that we filled out. I just, I tried to kind of compile everybody's comments based on the number of the question. And if anybody had any thoughts or questions about any of that on the first page with the team operations and the governance? Any thoughts or questions about any of the comments? No? Okay. So then, I compile all of our answers to the four questions on the second page. Any questions or comments about those? Do you need a minute to read them again, or? No? Okay. So then, I move along to the observation of our last meeting, and I averaged our scores that we gave, and then there are corresponding compiled comments to each of those questions. And then, lastly, which is where I wanted to, I think we should probably focus, is on, I made, kind of just made some general conclusions from all this information. And I, what I did is I put in order the priorities that people checked off. So, like, numbers one and two, they got four check marks, and then the next few had two check marks. So I did it in most important, as far as the number of check marks each of us gave, to the least important of any that got a check mark. So, I can read them if you want me to, or?
Well, I, I don't know if you don't mind. First of all, thank you to Sue, who compiled all this. I did go over, just briefly, meet with her last night, just sort of go over a couple of things and all of that. So, thank you very much, Sue, for doing this. And I like the format and being able to hear what other members have to say, too. And I think that's important as well. I don't, I mean, I think maybe reading them might be good. I just, I feel that some of these top ones, and we talked a little bit about just hot, like, procedures while we're here, especially now, being like on a dual platform almost, to the people who are here in person and the people on Zoom, and just sort of revisiting some of those items, like you did this, this last meeting with how to make a public comment, or if you do want something on the agenda, how do people go about do that, doing that, and things like that as well. So, I feel overall, you know, we scored pretty well, we're doing fairly well, but there are areas that we could improve on.
Absolutely. So, I'll just read them quickly. So, at the top, at the top, we're committee members being able to visit the schools, have a tour. Some of our new committee members have not been able to do that because of COVID. Establishing and reviewing the district's vision, mission, and annual goals on a regular basis. Electing committee officers in that process. Expressing opinions about other committee members' performance and behavior, again, just going over that process. Responding to community or employee complaints, and how to handle that. Properly using our email, it is a public domain, and we have to be careful not to have a form on it. Requesting information on an agenda item, putting an item on the agenda, responding to inquiries about executive session. I took that as if, if somebody, if a community member or somebody asks one of you, how do I do that? Is that what people were thinking about that, or just in general? General? Okay. Selecting and operating committees. One comment was, it's very difficult to do that with just five members. Need to have two members on each committee, so that can mean to serve on several committees. And so, you know, there was a, maybe it's worth discussing, and I know, I think Joe's brought this up several times. Do we need to expand the committee to maybe six or seven? Well, you have to have seven, right? Seven, seven. Orienting new members, planning professional development for school committee. I bet you can guess who had that one check mark? It would be me. Which kind of relates to all of this, and I had posed this question to you in my email to you last night, and I'll bring it up in just a minute. Requesting information not routinely provided by district administration. So, if you're, if you're blundering about something that maybe is not covered in a meeting, how could you go about getting that information? Developing and adopting the district budget. Those were the check marks that people were interested in looking at. So, my question to you was, obviously, these are varied. What's the best format to do those? Do we, any suggestions there? Is it just email blast from me with a little reminder? Or do we want to have a discussion time, or workshop time, or what do you think, Kelly?
Well, I don't think for me, because I wasn't on the board before this, and so, like, last year, you had done all of the committee positions, you talked about that before we came on. So, yes, we did the vote, but we really hadn't involved in any of, you know, the preparation of that. So, just how does that, what does that actually look like? I can repeat this. So, I think a lot of these things that I said, yes, they need detection, unless I put a specific, no, it was just because we've never done it before. So, it's something that you might need to go through, just so that we have a heads up on what it needs to look like. For me, that was, it wasn't, if I had any specific concerns, I'd definitely write in a column of what that concern really was. But for the most part, anytime, it was really just, we haven't done this, so we don't need to be worried about.
So, can I just pick up on that? Because this is the first place where I've worked where, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, but I know it felt a little awkward to me last year to have people come on board, like, in the middle of the budget process, and not having been really fully participated in that stuff, and then expected to sort of vote on it. And I don't know, I guess it's something I'm certainly happy to look into. Is it an expectation of the charter? Or is it just what past practice has been? In other places where I've been, once you get elected, you go on the board. The people who have been, who, right now, you get elected in November, and you don't start till January. So, there's two things I'm thinking about with respect to that. So, we can, you become sort of a pseudo-member, so you step, you get involved in the process. That's, that's why, when you take over, you have a little more background. Or, you step in right in November, the beginning, because the budget is like the biggest thing that we do. So, it would be best if you have firsthand information right from the very beginning, instead of coming in, you know, and probably through. But I don't know if the expectation of taking over, it's like I said, a charter issue, or if that's just what practice has been. I'm used to, I'm used to what I said, you voted in, you go to the next meeting and start.
It's like, I can't speak for Tim, because we both came on at the same time, but I found it a little bit frustrating that there were questions that I had, because I did go to those meetings between November and December. But there were questions that I had that you couldn't answer for me, because I wasn't technically a member yet. And so, that made me really nervous, coming in in January, and being expected to jump in and not have answers to some, to me, big questions.
So, my mind went directly to orientation.
Yeah.
So, perhaps we need to relook at that process.
I think that would probably be reasonable.
And then, also about, if you're sworn in, can you be, can you ask those questions? Because a lot of the times, you're sworn in for January.
Yeah. We were sworn in in November, weren't we?
Yeah.
Should we be sworn in?
Before our first meeting.
Oh, just before, that's right.
You should be able to be zoomed in the day after you are elected. As soon as they.
I'm trying to think of the, I think we just happened to have sworn in, and then, I don't know, I can't remember.
So, to specifically answer that part of the question, the other places where I've been, once you're sworn in, you're the school board, you are the school committee member. And even if we didn't want to say that, I think we need to have a consistent understanding of those of your question. Even if you're not, even if we want to say that Jana will stay on until the end of December, that's fine, she can stay on as the official member. I think it then does open the door for incoming people to be able to have access to that information.
Even if they're.
After orientation.
If they're non-voting members, you know?
Right, exactly. Non-voting. Yes, because my, my concern about them starting right in would be that orientation piece, because to me, that would be almost even scarier than starting in January. If you haven't had any time, it might be very difficult to orient somebody before the next meeting.
Do you know what the charter says, Jana?
I don't believe there's a specific thing on that. I have, you know, I feel like it's like a very minimal thing about electing school board members. But, you know, I was gonna say, I don't know if you could do something like that, that would be very helpful. But also, you know, when they do come on in January, that's when we also do all of our committees, and we do, we go for a chair and vice chair.
It's the very first meeting.
That is in the charter, and if that happens, January, the first meeting in January.
The organization.
But I don't believe that it says what exactly, are you looking at the charter right now?
I'm trying to.
Yeah. I don't believe it does say that you couldn't come on in November, nearly, like, right after your election, or whatever.
Well, I'd like, I personally wouldn't mind, and like I said, it was really awkward for me, because I'd never been through that before, but I was suggesting that you stay till the end of December, but the new members are.
A part of the board.
Are part of the board, non-voting members, I like that. So, information that is available to.
Us.
U5 would also be available to U5 plus the elected, the.
Whoever's coming in.
Yeah. I mean, you think about it, in any sort of elective thing, whether it's, you know, not comparing this to being the President of the United States, but there's a transition plan.
Right.
So, it makes sense that we would, if once you're elected and sworn in, then I think you should be eligible, not eligible, we should be, have information available to you.
And it would also give them an opportunity to learn a little bit about some of these policies, or some of these committees.
Just gonna say that.
That they will become involved in or ask, you know, the process, or, you know, or what is the policy committee, or what does the policy committee do? Because you don't know if you want to be a member of it or not. And it is a small committee, so you might be a member of several committees, so, yeah.
For training purposes, too, I'm thinking particular for warrants.
Yeah.
To understand that process ahead, before one of your members is gone, they, you know, they can help with that training, too.
Okay. Is that what you wanted tonight, to be what we're doing?
Yeah, just very briefly, yeah.
What's our next step now that we, so we get our feedback, so now, what do we do with this?
Right, so what are our next steps, basically? And how do we, how do we make it, how do we put it into action? So.
Do I have a copy of that?
I gave you, I gave, called it a copy to give to you.
Okay. I don't remember seeing it, that's why I was, but I will, I'll give it to her.
Yep, I gave it, I gave it to her earlier to give to you.
And it's all in the address.
It should be, I actually put it in all the packets.
I'll say, it may be something that we can address in our next agenda meeting, too, to see if maybe we want to do some workshop stuff, or.
Yeah.
You know, Jim might know a little bit better how to address some of these issues as well.
Yeah, that's true. And, you know, you all can also email Jana or myself if something pops into your head tomorrow, like, oh, I've been thinking about this, what do you think about that? Obviously, that, that can happen at any time, any kind of situation like that. That's basically all I wanted to do, is just, I wanted you to be able to see everybody's answers and kind of just put it into some kind of a logical format, and now, what can we do with it? Anybody else have anything they want to address with this?
I just want to agree with you, but it'd be nice to take a few of these topics and actually subside 20 minutes, 30 minutes to talk about it. And that was my, one of my concerns, what I was thinking of. I think, well, every time I see policy, and I was around a few years ago, when we were discussing some of these issues, and then we bring it back, you know, how much changes in that short period of time, but we've got so many policies in front of us, it just takes you hours just to read through it.
Yeah, it does.
But some of them should be taken up, and I think we're going to travel.
So, perhaps when we have some short agendas or during workshops, you know, short agenda, ha, ha, ha.
But, you know, one example, basically, we've got this, this whole idea of redoubts, and the whole question of, there's a strategic plan coming forward. We spent a lot of time on that strategic plan.
Yeah.
Weeks and months. I mean, they've really good job, it's a really good group of people across such. But there still is a need for especially moving.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be.
Needs to be read out. Speaking of that, where are we at? What's your?
So, I just found the charter piece. It says, the members of the Board of Education shall meet for organization on the first Monday in January after their election. So, even though that's in November, ready?
Right.
It's on my day.
I know. Well, yeah, the charter's way on date, but anyway. They should be sworn in to the faithful discharge of their. They should be sworn in to the faithful discharge of their duties by Justice of the Districts, John Clark. In a record made there, the majority of the whole number of the Board of Education shall be at forum. But it does not, that's the only thing that talks about date.
So. I guess I would like, as a matter of practice, for us to do what we, what I've suggested tonight unless there's objection, which is, once you are elected and sworn in, then you are in fact a member of the board of the school committee and the information that's available to all of you is available to all of you.
Yep.
I think that would make them more effective members of the media, so, you know.
I think some of the stuff, something that Sue and I can think about as part of doing orientation, because we didn't do it together. I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't do orientation last year. But I, that's what, one of the things we talked about is the committee structure and why that is. And that is a tough one, I think Joe has an excellent point. I don't know if I would like expanding to seven on some level, like, I don't think it makes any sense. But at other levels, it's really hard. I think, you know, last year we had two writing candidates. This year, we have somebody running and we have these two people that I'm aware of that are, that are interested in being as a writing candidate. I, I know in other places, other places where I've been, it seems like we invariably have a vacancy. It just, people aren't running, so, you know.
We've got a big raise, so that's something.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's how.
I'm surprised it's not 15 to 20 people.
Exactly. All right, unless there's anything else anybody wants to add, we'll move on. Thank you, everybody, for doing this, I really appreciate you taking the time.
I'm related to this, I'm just curious, should we have begin the discussion of my evaluation next month?
December, right?
Well, it should be done in December, so you might want to think about how you're gonna forward that.
Often, there's gonna be more, just like a progress report in the summer, and your official one is in.
That's why you're the chair, because you're so smart.
That's because I hounded you, remember when did I?
And we did, we.
I was like a dog with a bone.
We talked about sending out the survey to the board members to get ready for that. Sue and I had that discussion.
So I would just respectfully request, while not looking for any major changes on the board, looking for any increase in pay, because I have the contract for three years. There is a part of the contract I'd like the school committee to consider, and you'd have to do that in December.
Okay.
So without executive session.
Excellent.
Well, we'd do executive session to talk about whatever you want feedback going to give me.
Right.
As part of a progress report, and then to consider any requests that I might have for a change.
Excellent.
You can do that on your way out, Jana.
I'll give you anything you want, yeah.
You know what, your two negotiations people should not sit together.
I want some for the arrow.
Could I just bring up one more thing?
Sure.
Under whole business, because it's not on the agenda. But we do have the main school management association conference coming up. And we also have the legislative assembly meeting that will take place on Saturday, which I plan to attend via Zoom. And in our back at last, two weeks ago, we did have a copy of the revised additions of resolution. And I guess there was some foresight to say that by the time they would get done, it looks like having a glass of warm milk. There's really not much controversy in this table, too. I don't want to go through them all, but my suggestion is, if you want to look at it, and it'll take you 10 minutes or so, bring it on. If you have anything you want to say, you can say, either email me or call me.
Okay.
Before Saturday, because I would like to know if you found something that I didn't see. You know, there, there are things like a recommendation to do this, a resolution to do that, better education, these types of things. Probably the most controversial of the two dealing with taking a strong position on not changing laws regarding strikes or binding arbitration, which both of those issues almost passed the legislature in the last session. I think one of them may have passed when Governor Vito, but the point is, is that with the makeup of the legislature, there's a lot of push being made by the unions to take, and in particular, binding arbitration. The concern about that, and it is expressed well here, is that when you go into arbitration, you don't know exactly who's going to make the decision. But most likely, they're not from your community, they don't know about your community. They're also perhaps broadly looking at it in terms of, any decision like that could apply to the entire state. Which there again, would put a lot of school districts, districts in a real line, because binding arbitration usually ends up dealing with money issues. And certain districts just do not have the money. And the state, you know, really hasn't approached the whole subject of saying, should we have a statewide system of negotiations? I think we're headed in that way, except that there will be objections then made, particularly in the richer communities, and saying, we don't want anything that handicaps us, even if we are $15,000, $20,000 more than our judges in terms of the salaries here. Or we give more days off, or whatever, it doesn't matter. But that's a very important issue, and I think this is very strongly stated, that we've got to try to avoid that. And so I just mentioned those two union issues, because they are well said, well spoken for, and not surprised. I think we've done things here which, you know, to try to take and accomplish our goals, which is not to get our staff in any way, you know, discriminated against in terms of what we're able to pay. We want them to have as high as we can get to. And certainly, we've created a salary scale that's above what the state would like to have us pay. But, you know, that's the nature of our job, you know, we've got to defend the community and support the victim. So I just mentioned that quickly.
Thank you, Joe.
So, Kate, just in sort of summary, in case you're not aware of it, that there's a lot of things that can be subject to binding arbitration. Anything dealing with money is presently not subject to binding arbitration. The laws that are being proposed, that are being considered would change that, which would allow us, not allow us to have local control with respect to binding arbitration.
Plus the fact that there's also, you know, our ability to set the policies regarding what we're teaching. Is also something that's up for discussion. And I think there's, there needs to be a great deal of concern to say that that's why you have a lot of school boards to make sure this gets the best education possible, and not influenced by a national up and down type of situation.
Thank you, Joe.
And I would also like to say, Mr. Superintendent, I am checking my schedule regarding Friday for that conference, because there's a couple of things I'd like to listen to.
Yeah.
And if I can, I will talk to you more clearly next week.
Okay, you can talk to Colleen. You can talk to me, but that means I'll have to talk to Colleen.
That's right.
Colleen, Colleen makes things happen. Okay, ready to move on to new business?
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to apply for a revolving renovation fund.
So moved second?
Moved and seconded, discussion.
So I've asked Joel to, to be here. So let me, let me, I also sent you as part of your packet the, the whole timeline. And I, I know that you don't like to make decisions without having a lot of information, but that's not the nature of how this works. I asked Joel to take a look at the projects we're looking at. Remember the summer he talked when he first took the job? He talked about a number of projects and how far behind we are as a system. We're dealing with some maintenance issues, and so I, I had mentioned that we're gonna consider a revolving renovation fund project. And so you don't really have to vote on a specific number until December. So you'll, you'll have some time. But what I'd like to ask, if you could indulge us a little bit, Joel is going to go through the projects. I'll give you a ballpark, what we're looking at for a few years now.
Before you start, this is due within nine days. Are you gonna be able to get it in in time?
It's all, it's ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I've been asking Joel to work on it, but we can't submit it without your approval.
Yes, basically, the way the process works is that I will, I've got everything filled out. And it takes your appro, your signature and your signature before I can submit it. You have the list that was in my report of what we've identified for priorities, I guess, in a sense. I guess the big thing that I've learned through this process is right now, you put everything high, and then there's a whole, there's another whole component to this, where they'll come in and do an assessment of what is really going to be needed for that. I have, I'm, I'm gonna say about 50% of the quotes are back. And every single person has said to me, I, I don't trust this number, it's gonna go up. We can play the COVID blame game or whatever we want to, but it's, it's just like anything else, such as oil right now. It's just going up and up and up and up. Doesn't seem to be stopping. There's a difference of opinion, I guess, on what's been identified, depending on who you talk to. I can tell you that I, I've come into this job with a very neutral lens. And these 11 things, there's another one that I found out about recently in the last 24 hours that I'll be adding, is an extension of what I tried to paint for a picture, which I'm sure I lost most of you because I talked for 45 minutes. Our district is in dire need of repair. And I'm not talking about making things look pretty in painting, I'm talking about when you purchased a, a boiler system six years ago from a local dealer, that warranty expired last year, and we are already starting to piece it back together. It has a life of 15 years, and it is not an industrial boiler. And there's three of them in the middle school. One of them goes down, the temperature continues to go down because the other two can't keep up. It was not a good purchase. And I have all the facts, and what's called a health report from Siemens, explaining why the answer is what I've given you tonight. That's gonna be a huge ticket item, but you're not gonna be able to have school in the winter if we don't address it. That's coming soon, and it's not gonna last 15 years, which obviously at this time would be another nine to 10. So we're working on that. The oil pump that actually brings oil to that system is 40 years old. It's original to the system, it's not even up to code. What does that mean to you? That means the next time we have this conversation, and we need to replace it, and this is what I just found out in the last 24 hours, that you're looking at a $50,000 tag to be up to code, just to be able to do that. At the middle school, I talked about this, it's actually supposed to be glycol. I literally wrote this at 5:30 in the morning last week, so I apologize for not wordsmithing. Glycol is an antifreeze that is in your, in our, excuse me, I'm talking at you and I shouldn't be doing that. It, it keeps it so for when we do lose those boilers, you're not gonna have pipes that blow, because they freeze. Why is that an issue? Because the holding tank is in a classroom, and it actually looks like a trash can. You can walk over, open it up, and look inside of it. It's also deteriorated, and I've, I've shown Mr. Ojkin the pictures, to the point that the seals have been eaten away by this chemical, and it's dripping down into our boiler room, that it's cleaned up on a weekly basis, which obviously is a chemical hazard also. That's a $14,000 price tag that was in the budget, that I think I could do that, but I don't think we can afford it anymore, because the air circulator in the Winthrop Middle School cafeteria is now gone. We paid $1,500 to have that rebuilt, and it lasted a week and a half to two weeks before the bearing went again. I'm in discussion with them now to at least get credit on the new $2,500 circulator to get back in there, because as we all know, that's keeping our kids safe. The windows are open and we're doing things like that now. But the reality is, is that that's another price tag item that took away from something much bigger. So where all of this is leading is I can sit here and I can throw numbers at you, but I just want you to understand that what I've done is, is spent some time on this to make sure that we address what needs to be addressed now. But you, that, this is by no means getting us even close to looking at the edge of the woods, if, if you would. We're, we're still, we, we still need some major stuff. The high school, which is 20 years old, you know, as you saw here, the back doors are completely rotted through. Two years ago, I pointed out to Mark, probably on his second or third week on the job, as a rainstorm came in, you could watch rain run down between the panes. That's because there's no dormers over there, there's no sunlight. We have dormers that are being built out of our budget to take care of that, but the reality is still those doors have to be replaced in a $1,500 to $1,800 apiece. And you have four of them. So, we have four of them, sorry, I'm just, again, trying to let you know my life. There's also some other things, just, you know, that, that probably need to be addressed, but they're not high priority because they don't take us out of school. The last one that does is the water system, it's 40 years old, they built everything out of iron. And what that means is, now that those have broken down and there's rust in the system, that's affecting the air pump. And the way that works is the air pump fills a tank to pressurize the water to send it through. Every week, we have to take that apart and, and make sure that the rust is off of that, because we had a situation earlier this year where someone went in to use the bathroom, and it's supposed to kick off at 30, and it was at 100, and it shot water right up through. If you have toilets that don't absorb that pressure as it's, you know, so, besides the obvious conversation of the water sewer bill, that could literally blow that toilet apart. It's not an exaggeration, and then you flet your buildings. So then you have damages that are beyond repair, the school is closed, and you obviously can't use the bathroom. But you, you just have some major issues, so. I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, I'm just trying to be honest with you. So that's what we've identified, and all the paperwork is ready to go for, for that. It's quite a simple process, to the point that I've been overthinking it, because I feel like I'm missing something. But it's pretty general right now, just to get us there. I think from having conversations with folks that I know do these jobs also, we're actually in an okay shape compared to some schools. Jim and I had a conversation, you know, there's some schools over in RSU 4 that are much worse than we are, but we're certainly heading towards that. I, and I just, I can't say this to you enough, I'm not coming back to you with a flat budget maintenance this year. It's not a possibility for us. It, it, this, this has been a conversation in the 20 years I've been in here in Winthrop, and it's done time, it's, there's, there's no more patchy. The more you patch, the more you're gonna pay in the long run. And I think people need to understand that, because those are community buildings.
So if we approve it and you apply, what's the timeline as far as?
So my first time through this, what I understand is that this will start the process now, and then they come back to us, I believe, in December. And then they'll, they'll, it'll be yea or nay, or let's have a conversation about this, basically. So if you're asking, is it a possibility that we lose some things before we get funding or fixed? Absolutely. Yep. As a matter of fact.
Can you where they, they would have their final priority list?
Yep.
So, you know, we have a little bit of time, but who knows?
And we're one event, you know, I mean.
I guess I'm more asking, when would the money be disseminated so we can get this done?
Not till next year, no.
Yes, this is probably summertime work, this is pulling your buildings apart.
We, we, so the process is this, if we could approve from the state for whatever amount of money we, we're putting in, then we have to, we have to bond it. We have essentially a permission, and the state is not guaranteeing it.
To.
To whatever.
To.
To. So we would then go to the main bond bank, or we could choose somebody else, but the main bond bank's gonna give us the best rates. And it's, it'll be a low interest loan, which could be anywhere from zero to one or two percent. And then we go through the application process with them, so it's then up to them. So, you know, we, we really need to, what Joel was saying is, we really need to, and I said this to him, let's put everything, I think we can get up to a million dollars.
So, so that, I guess was my question.
No, it's a cap, I think it's capped at a million.
Well, this says it's capped at a million per priority, per school building.
Yep.
Right.
So it sounds like it could be three or more million dollars.
Could be. I don't think we're gonna go that high, but, you know, and also, some of the things that also is on the list that we can't do, one of the, I mean, one of, a huge need for us, that's a different conversation, but you should know, if you look at this list, tire, paving projects are not eligible.
But I am gonna try to put through that, we don't have any drainage out there. The drainage is completely collapsed. And we can also play the blame game, it is a town responsibility, but I just don't see that happening. I've, again, I've heard that conversation for a long time, too.
This says that a portion of each loan is considered a grant and is forgiven. The forgiveness rate ranges from 30% to 70%, and is based on the percentage of the state subsidy paid to the local SAU. Do we know what that would be for us?
We're possibly 50/50.
And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that gets back to your conversation earlier about the free and reduced. That number gets thrown in there. So can you absorb that through your taxes? That's basically what that question or formula is about.
And then also it says it can, the loan can either be paid back five or ten years. Do you have, do you know yet what?
Yeah, I wanna, I will have, we have time, I wanna get some specifics. It used to be, you had twenty years, you go up to twenty, but I saw that ten, I was, you know, twenty would've been nice. But, you know, I think we, I'm sure we'll be able to get to ten. I think some of that has to do with whether you go through the main bond bank or you go through, or we may choose to go with Anderson Scott Bank because they are our.
So I guess the last thing I just wanted to add to you is that I'm doing a lot of this work with Siemens, which is a contract we already have, great, great folks, very informative, have done a great job making sure I'm right there when they're doing things and explaining things so I can bring it to you, which I think is probably fifty percent of why I got hired, so you understand what's going on. They are working with me through this process because this is how they make their living. They don't hide anything, you know, it's, if you get this grant, we can do this because you're under our contract. But they're also working on trying to mainstream some things for us that will save us money, hopefully to address some of these things by not having four or five. One of my biggest pet peeves, I'm not gonna lie to you, is that we pay modern, past seventy-five dollars to come in for fifteen minutes and change a mousetrap. That's ridiculous. That can be added into the contract and those types of things. Doesn't mean they're bad business people or bad people, it's just I know how to change a mousetrap. I don't think you need to pay me seventy-five bucks, I'll do it for twenty. But, you know, just, but the reality is, is you know what I'm saying. We all have to do it at our house and so forth and there's regulations and I get that, but if you can put that into a group that's already in your building, you're not paying for that service call. I mean, it's just.
So I would take a, what Joel was saying, to Siemens, and I've had this conversation with the guys before, about looking at performance contract. I mean, we are typically, we'd be prime, given the age of our buildings, to look at a performance contract, which, as I share with you, we did one in the former district. We did two million dollars worth of work and no net increase to the tax base, which sounds really ideal. Realized through more conversations is we're not primed for a performance contract because we, things have gone too far. We no longer, we're just not gonna see the, the only thing that we possibly could do, and it's one of the things that Joel's looking at and added to his list, is a lighting project.
Yes.
But we wouldn't do that under, under the revolving renovation fund as opposed to a performance contract. It makes no sense to do both and to do one or the other.
So I have some good news I just wanna share with you. I always get this wrong, but the gentleman that helped us with the filters, his company is paying for an independent third party to come in and test our air. So, the good news about the circulator not working in the cafeteria right now at the middle school is that we're gonna get a baseline of what it's like without it. And then when it is working, we are going to have all three buildings tested again. They're out of Dallas, he sent me the bill and it's at no cost to the school. It's, obviously it benefits him also, but I just wanted to let you know that that actually adds to the discussion we've been having about our kids being safer in school. We have scientific data that will back that up, so.
Joel?
Yeah, first of all, just an overall comment, we did the revolving renovation fund a number of years ago.
Yep.
I think we borrowed a million dollars.
I still have the five.
And it was, you know, it really lifesaved us at a particular time. I think that's exactly the right way to go is to, we need this money, we need to fix up these things. Secondly, I was also part of the discussion on our people that we're now working with and everything, to make sure that we didn't forget our local contractors. We have some wonderful people who are in this community who are much smarter than we might give them credit for, even though they're just the local something or other. Because some of these issues they've even mentioned to me, and one of them was, what you relied to was this, we've got a whole community where we've got too much steel in our water system. We used to go to some kind of a plastic PVC type of thing. I mean, I did not, done that in my house.
Right.
And I know it makes a big difference, particularly those of us that run wells in this area. But I am always concerned about the local guys, okay? So I'm just kinda biased in that area, but I'm sure you know a lot of the people that I'm talking about. There's some others that don't even know how to apply for things. But I just think you're going in exactly in the right area, you gotta do these things. My only other one was this. I'm not, I'm sure I'm not the only person. I'm really concerned about the climate issue. And I know that people don't like to hear it, but a real reason for the climate issue is because we've chosen to burn fossil fuel. I'd like to see you, in your considerations, look to alternatives, to fossil fuels. And that may mean heat pumps, which are powered by electricity. Because that means we have to get the electricity not made by fossil fuel too.
Sure.
But, but, but I'm really serious about that. I really think that we have to do whatever we can. And that's actually one of the topics that is being made at the main school management conference, is how to make your school system to be more environmentally friendly. And so, I think this is on Friday, because I think I know, I think I had it checked off, so I'd like to just hear this and what they're trying to do. So, that's me, okay? But that's what I meant.
No, I, I had that discussion yesterday. When we were, they cleaned the boilers and found that the fire boxes had already, we're gonna have to repair them to go, to make it through the winter. The biggest thing they mentioned to me is that those units in the middle school boiler room are losing almost forty percent of the heat they produce up the chimney. And so they're, they're very conscious, you know, and so here's the thing. This is, this is basically what Jim is saying to you. Siemens is not gonna tell you to do something they can't guarantee for a long period of time because they're gonna pay you money back and they know that. So, they, they have anything ranging from pellet stones to propane that are almost ninety-five percent, you know, efficient. I, you know, again, I hate hearing other people's messes because when we do this, we're gonna pay for it the right way and you're gonna be solid for a while. You know, the reality is, is you shouldn't be looking in a boiler room at a forty-year-old pump. You should be looking at one sitting next to it, ready to go. Because you're gonna lose, you're gonna have major damage when that happens. I just, I'm shocked that this has gone on so long, to be honest with you.
So, and Joel said earlier, and this sort of is, was with you Kelly, we, these are the types of things that need to be in the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
In terms of planning and we do need to figure out the reality of, if we gotta, just throwing a number out, I don't think we would've been going for a million dollar revolving renovation fund, but let's just say hypothetically we did. We just put in the principal payment for that and that's, that's all we do. That we're, all we're doing is setting ourselves up to be back here in, you know, fifteen years or so, doing the same thing. We need to be looking at a solid preventative maintenance plan. We need to be looking at, you know, changing, making changes and upgrading and whatever, you know. We, and we have, the thing that's, I guess, was a little shocking for me coming as superintendent was, we use some great companies here. GD Roofing is the best in my mind in the state for roofing. Siemens is certainly up there with Honeywell and there's two or three others that are really, really good with controls. And it's just, it's, it's a little frustrating. I'm really glad, and you guys should all be, I think, part of yourselves for making the decision to change that position. So, and I said this to you, and I said it to somebody else Friday night who's talking to me. You know, people who think we have too many administrators, when you don't, when you have something as valuable, if I look at Megan and Joel sitting there in front of me, and those are two fairly new positions in terms of their roles, the most significant things we do in the school is teaching and learning. And we had nobody who was, who was responsible for that most important thing. We have billions of dollars worth of assets and we have nobody, and when I mentioned that to somebody, this is the same thing Joe said to me, hopefully joking, that's what you have me for. I was like, well, that's, that's crazy. I, I can't do all of those things and, you know, keep the hand along as much as, but we have to have somebody who focuses on teaching and learning. We have to have somebody who focuses on paying attention to our buildings, making sure they're safe and efficient for our kids. And I'm glad you guys saw that and supported that and I hope you continue to do that.
I guess just before we, thank you for making me sick to my stomach.
Sorry.
But truly, I really appreciate how thorough you have gone through every aspect so far of all of the holdings, physical, buildings, fields, everything. You've done a really wonderful job of going through it all meticulously and really keeping us up to date with that. And I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I give credit to the guys. I mean, they know their buildings inside and out and it was very easy to transition to this job, telling me what needed to be advocated for their buildings. And that's, I think, been part of the problem with this system we had set up previous, is there's nobody sitting here telling you. You know, they can tell the superintendent, but he's also has to, he has to put it through a different lens. You know, my lens is to keep your buildings open, it's not good right now.
So, leave for a while somewhat unrelated, but, but I think absolutely as important in terms of planning and thinking about things, and I'm not trying to pick old scabs or anything like that, but one of the things that Joel and I have been doing over the past month or more is looking at our contracted services for maintenance, our custodial work. And I'm a little frustrated that by making decisions to contract for that, we lose some flexibility. And it feels to me like it's a pretty pricey proposition. So, gone through the process, quite frankly, we can hire those people, pay them a better wage, give them benefits that they presently have and could actually save some money. So that's kinda, up until today, I was actually prepared to come in tonight and tell you that's what we should do. And then Joel met with the custodians and basically, the piece that is really frustrating for me is, when Winthrop made the decision to go to contracted services, we sold all of the custodial equipment. We owned zero. So, I was thinking, well, that's okay, if our startup costs are, are, you know, somewhere in the twenty, thirty thousand dollar range, you know, we could, we could, you know, figure that out. But they looked at it today, the actual startup cost can be somewhere in three hundred plus thousand dollars. So, it's cost prohibitive for us, but we're gonna have to sort of stay where we're at now. It's frustrating. It's short sighted, quite frankly, it's the same, the same level of frustration with the idea that we sold our buses. I'm not opposed to contracting buses, but they loved it best when it was our buses. And we can't, we, the people who contract would use our buses. We now, it's completely out of our hands and we're at kind of a diversity of the contractors to, you know, we're enjoying the benefits of, of a reduced rate for three years, but after that, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, we're gonna be in big trouble with that, so. It's, we need to be really purposeful. Again, I think you should congratulate yourselves just in terms of having a little more vision about what does it look like five, ten, fifteen years down the road, that's what's important.
Any other comments or questions?
Please understand that these are things that are a long-term plan.
Your thoughts, yeah?
Yep.
Joel, just off the top, he had, I know I said I wouldn't do this, seven hundred, seven fifty?
Six hundred and seventy-three thousand right now.
I have a problem with it by the time we have to finalize the number.
Yep, to the point you hold on the application before it's coming to us all. I mean, which makes sense, you're only going to do it once, you're gonna start finding this.
Yep, yep. Oh, you didn't vote yet.
No, we did not vote yet. Are we ready to?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor? Go pass it to Ms. I will entertain a motion to authorize Monday, November twenty-second and Tuesday, November twenty-third of twenty-twenty-one as remote learning days for Winthrop Public School.
Second.
Moved in second and discussion.
I think we had a great discussion about this last week.
I think this, um. Yeah, I, there's nobody from the WA here too, but it was, unless you're here for them, Melissa. Are you the representative tonight?
No.
Okay. But they did, oh.
She's online.
Teresa?
Teresa and Marsha are both online, I don't know if they're.
I don't know that any of you say anything, I mean, we just, just wanna say, I mentioned that I met with them this afternoon and they gave the results of the survey they did. And I think, you know, it's one of the things that was brought up before was this, you know, one of the reasons that this is to give the teachers a break is it really what we wanted to do. I was like, no, that's, I don't think this is, I think the term that was used, and I don't, I think the person that made positive was intended to be positive, but this is not intended as a reward. I think this is a recognition of kind of where people are at and what they need. And, you know, last year we did the four days and the fifth day was a planning process. We've had, we've eliminated virtually all of that this year. And so this is sort of a sense of recognition of kind of how hard it's been for people, for our teachers and our staff and to give them, they will do remote teaching that day, but the remote teaching is not the same. They will have some time over those two days to do more planning and processing. Hopefully they put themselves in a better, better space, better place to make the stretch from there till Christmas. And then, I'll be honest with you, I think, you know, that's sort of as far out as I can think right now. We come back and, you know, I don't know where COVID will be, I don't know where the Delta variant will be in December. I don't know any of those things, I have no way of predicting it. And so I think this is a good way for us to, to figure out a way to get through to the end of the year, not the school year, the twenty-one year, and then regroup as we get towards that break and figure out if we need other things to do, so.
I just, I just wanna follow up, kind of as a reminder. I think we talked about the fact that we have to stress and also meet the expectations of our parents and students that these remote days will not be just throw them something, it'll be meaningful in some way in terms of their learning and what they're doing. And I say that because when this kind of got out a little bit into the community and received some people that are good friends of mine, that they always look at these things and say, oh, so that means basketball prices at nine AM in the morning. And, you know, we just have to be aware of the fact that they're not expecting that we're gonna allow coaches to take and bring their teams in early or have kids hanging around and stuff like that. That this is not a chance for them to go skiing early, but this is actually, because we give credit for this being a learning day, that we will do that. And I think it's important for us to prove it because in the past, it's always been like a vacation time, even though we might have had teacher workshops and everything, but this, this is a little bit different. This is actually a learning, learning thing too.
This is a lot different in that we, particularly if you make the, you know, the decision tonight that I think teachers will know a month in advance that we're doing this. They will know there'll be remote days, they will plan accordingly. There is another, we had an early release today, we have another early release in November and the focus will be on, on making sure that this is, you know, as good a day as possible. I don't know if the high school, the high school is, in my mind, surprisingly decided to do things synchronously, not asynchronously. So they, you know, they're, for them, it's a, it's a ton of work for the teachers. But again, if you gotta, how long, you have seventy-minute classes?
Yes.
So if it's seventy-minute class, you have to be on there for instruction or direction for even half of it, then it gives you, you know, some time, you know, thirty minutes, forty minutes to do some additional prepping and stuff and be available to respond to students and, but also to give you a chance to sort of prepare and process moving forward, so.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to take a vote? All right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to elect Jennifer Blais as part-time middle school and high school. Some moved in second, moved in second to a discussion.
I just, I had a small committee set up and unfortunately it was one of the days that Melissa had to, it's not available, she's dealing with other priorities at her, at her school. So, Jeannie Ross and I met and we, Dr. Sidney was great. Jeannie loved feeling really, really good, she's feeling like Melissa, feeling very overwhelmed and she's dealing with some other stuff too. So, she had talked to me a while back about really the need for this. And I mean, quite frankly, we need more than this, but. And I mean, quite frankly, we need more than this, but what we can manage to do right now is this. So, the plan is that she's gonna work two or three days, depending on, she's a nurse. So, she has, she's on the contract at, I believe it's Central Maine Medical Center, okay? And so, that's her job, and this is gonna be her second job. She has not been a school nurse before, although this year she is doing subnursing at Freeport and in Durham. So, she does have experience. She lives here in Monroe. She's thrilled to be able to come back here. She's very impressed. She was sort of, we were made aware of her by one of our employees, really outstanding employee that we have, recommended her, and I did the reference checks, and she'd be a huge addition. And you will see, just to give you a heads up, that I think G D right now is planning to spend some time working with her, a couple days a week, and then eventually you probably will see a request for a reduction. We'll still end up, so if we hire this person, it'll give us two point five F T Es of nursing. And by the time we're done, we're probably gonna end up with probably two point two or two point three. It won't be, you know, G D will probably back off a day or two as part of this plan, so.
Any questions? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Vote pass unanimously. Welcome, Jen. She also, I know Jen, and she has two girls in the community, in our school, so it'd be nice to come along here.
I just got a question about the, does it have to be unanimous?
No, it doesn't have to be at all. It could be four to one, or two to three, or... Yep. Sometimes it goes down to two to two, and then I have to pass the last one. Okay, we are ready for public comment. Are there any public comments? Joe?
The heel points were finalized today in soccer and field hockey, so I just wanted to let publicly people know that soccer will be traveling to Trape to play on Friday. Boys at three thirty. I have not heard from the Monmouth Athletic Director yet as far as the girls. I believe they finished number four or five, which, yep. Booth Bay or Spruce? It might be, so I don't know who dropped it, who didn't. Okay. Is it, do you know if it's a prelim? Is it this Friday or Saturday? Okay, so it's a prelim. And then the girls are playing at Coney on Friday in a scrimmage, which isn't counting, but it's on the turf. And I just got the insurance from M S M A, and they will be playing at Thomas College next Thursday at five thirty, just 'cause that's when the field is available. It will be Moranekook or Booth Bay, I believe.
Is it Thomas at five thirty on Thursday?
Yes.
With the, are they number one?
Yes, they are.
Just write that down.
I did contact both editors of Portland and Cajun slash Sun Journal. They do not know about the game, and they have one reporter on that night, so you're not attached.
Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Alicia Lawson. I'm going to be running as one of the writing candidates for the Winter School Board or Winter School Committee. I have five children, four of which have been in the Winthrop school system, so just wanted to put a face to the name.
Awesome. Good luck.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for your interest. Anybody else? Okay, we can move on to school committee comments. Jana?
I just, I loved reading the administrator's reports. I know you wanted to comment possibly then, but it's just nice to see a lot of normalcy happening in school. I loved hearing all the clubs that are starting up again, and just the fact that most of them have also had full athletic schedules. Congratulations to all the teams and good luck in tournaments. Also want to just again thank the police, fire, ambulance for their support of bringing the girls' field hockey team through town after their M B C game. It's just really nice when I post those things on Facebook. There are so many alumni that comment, and just they, it's one thing they love about Winthrop is that small town support that we get from our community. So, it's just, it's awesome. So, thank you for everyone who puts that together. I'm also looking forward to the Storfo Society presentation. It was really cool to see Dave carrying in the fall. Is that gonna happen again in the spring, or is...
Yes, the plan will be for the entire school to do it in the spring, just before April vacation.
That's awesome. I love seeing that. And then, I was in front of the grade school the other day, and I don't know if anyone's noticed, they played for a tree for Jeff Ladd, and it's the greeting tree, and it's got a little plaque out there. And so, I just thought that was really nice, and it's gonna be there to greet grade school children from here until eternity. So, I thought that was nice, and when I mentioned it, I was with my sister, and she said it was put in with our new tractor. So, we didn't have to hire anyone to put that in. So, our investments are paying off that we don't have to do that, and our guys are doing it right here. So, I just wanted to say thank you to that too. But it was just a really nice tribute. I didn't know that they did that.
So, I just, real quickly, off topic, I just, I have to share this. So, when I left, first thirty, whatever, years ago, and I left my first job, they planted the tree for me. And so, when I went back home two or three years later, they potted it over.
This one's not gonna get rolled over. It's very long, but it's just, I just thought it was a perfect tribute to Mr. Ladd.
Yeah, he did.
Because he is out there, was out there reading kids. I'm sure he's still out there, but it was just awesome. It was perfect.
Max was where he was, so he probably just don't...
Joe?
Thank you. I was very positive, though. I now love field hockey. I went the other night to their M B C championship game down in Lewiston. What a beautiful night it was. Except for some wonderful people, including Susan's in-laws, who explained to me what the game was all about. Because, you know, being a hockey player, you know, I recognize a lot of the skills that were being used. But the one thing I got out of it, you gotta stay in your lane. Can't get out of, and that's the most important thing in hockey, is tell them to stay in their lane. You still home get it. But the point is, is that Coach Colton and the others have done such a great job of training them and getting them to play in some respects, maybe even better than what they are because they are coached well. And they understand the game a lot better. Good group, a wonderful game, and I'm really glad that I was able to put them into the schedule and get there. I think it's gotta be, you know, maybe ten, twelve, maybe fifteen years ago since I last saw you. I would encourage other people there, you wanna go and watch field hockey, because this game's got something to it, so. So, that was one of the things I wanted to congratulate them in. And Jana, I want to congratulate you. The fact is, just by your filming of such things as the parade afterwards, I didn't even know there was a parade until the next morning when I turned it on. I said, oh, my goodness, I missed this. You know, you've done that for so many years, and I really agree with you. It's such a big addition. I agree with the others who are complimenting you, that this is such a big addition to show this little community spirit. So, I was really pleased with that. I'd love to have more cross-country drag news.
Awesome. That's probably what I'm gonna say.
Because I actually try to follow it when they're listed in the papers and stuff like that. And even though we're not big in size in terms of numbers, I'm pretty pleased with the way that the students have come through this year and my competition and everything. That's just great. I do agree, we said this earlier, and I need to repeat it again. I think there's a real need to look at how the vaccinations are going to affect kids. And that was interesting, because Dr. Schag got into that this afternoon, and how certain communities have done wonderful things about assisting parents who really do need some childcare, or they need rides, or whatever it is. And even around us, there are some community activities going on in Mount Vernon or in Wayne that I wish were going on and organized here in Winthrop to take and provide services to people. But that's why I made the field hockey games, because my daughter needed my help in taking care of her younger so that she could spend time with her daughter who was sick and everything. So, not that I can volunteer for everybody, but he seemed to like it. But, but I think it's important that communities get to find a way to help out people. I'm not saying any of you have to do it, who can do it, but certainly needs to be a discussion on how we can make some arrangements. Because there are people out there who would volunteer to do those things, and I know there are. And finally, kind of a sad note, but also a happy note, because he's certainly not suffering anymore, but our former interim superintendent, Steve Patrell, for some of you know, died this past week in a long battle that he had with cancer and stuff. He's now passed over the bridge, so to speak.
I believe there's a memorial service for him at the Monmouth Academy this Sunday.
Just there is.
Can I just also, former Winthrop teacher Bob Teague passed away too this week.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I don't know when Bob retired, but I know I had him in high school. He was helping Arizona, and he passed away as well this past week.
Is Judy, Judy Sullivan, his wife?
No. Both his, yeah, no. I don't think so.
Is that a joke? Timothy?
I have much. I just, like, promised my eight-year-old daughter that she wanted me to say something about a teacher.
Okay.
She loves her teacher, best teacher ever. And that's Miss, I think, always asked of her name, S. Stanowicz?
Stanowicz.
So, I said, I will say that tonight.
That is so sweet. Kelly?
I already kind of shared my appreciation for Joel's work here. That was part of what I wanted to say. And just two other things, in reading the administrator reports, I am loving the "we welcome all" sign that's at the high school. I think that's beautiful, and I love that it's right there to be seen. And then, in Joel's report, I was kind of blown away with the boys' soccer and field hockey teams doing the fundraiser to help... Somebody who's not part of this community, but still part of our broader community. You know, there are some towns where they would say, sorry, you're part of our competitive area. We're not gonna help you. And we just have such a beautiful community here, and it was so nice to see it happen.
Yeah, it really was. And Monmouth also did some fundraising for them, so it's really cool. Anything else, Kelly? That's it? Amalie?
I just have a couple of things to go over that happened in the last week. So, today, the high school did their first round of pool testing. I participated. It was super easy, very well organized. Got to see Miss Chris. She's great. We've been doing, we, the freshmen did it last week. They all did it on one day, but the sophomores and juniors have been doing it in their math and reading classes throughout the week. We did the P S A Ts last week, so the freshmen did the V A's. The student council, they elected some officers. It's not been done yet, but we have, the president is with Wells, and I'm the community relations person, so I generally break forward with what we're doing in student council anyways, which you might hear more from me on their behalf. The drama and art club did a Halloween party on Tuesday. I was there, but Caroline can talk about that a little more. And I am part of the outing club, and we did, which started this year, it's been this year. And we went on our first outing over the last weekend. We went to Camp Hill and did a camping trip, and that was really, really fun. And the weather was a little bit rough, but we made it through. It's still really cool to be there. We did it with the Kings and Trails, which is a really cool organization, and we met a lot of cool people. So, I would definitely encourage people to join, because it was an amazing experience, so.
Thank you, Amalie. Caroline?
Yeah, just to touch up a little bit. Sorry, just to continue with all this stuff that's happened in Alaska for a little bit before that. W B U S released its first episode of season five, and we were very excited. This is on Rambler Connection's YouTube channel if you haven't watched it. National Honor Society is also interested in presenting some serious projects again. Jerry and Amy, we talked about that, no, we didn't this morning.
Okay.
If you guys are interested, we are very interested in that.
Absolutely.
And the student body decided that this Fridays football game will be a pink hat to celebrate Western football. And the drama club, as Amalie said, had the first get-togethers since COVID has started. Club-wise, it's not like a practice, but we're all in the party. We had Halloween blocks of Halloween candy, too much Halloween candy. Played some games and got to know each other as a cast. The art club joined, which was really fun, because there's some kids who aren't in drama, who aren't in arts. We were all about to meet, and that was good.
Cool. Excellent.
Can I ask a quick question for you? Do you know the date of the play that will be?
Do you? Yes, it's in December.
It's in your report.
Oh, I just, okay, thank you. Are you over?
So, while they're looking that up, I'll go, so we can all go home. I wanted to recognize Mario Latin. Mr. Campbell had outlined this in his report. Her fall 2020 P S A T score earned her recognition from the college board. Her scores have garnered her recognition as a potential semifinalist for a national merit scholarship. I just wanted to acknowledge Mario, because that is pretty amazing, and good luck in the rest of it. I was gonna mention field hockey, but Joe covered that, although one thing that Joe didn't tell you, that he didn't know, was that they only use one side of the field hockey stick. He's kind of blown away when he, when he heard that.
I saw some things called.
And then, my daughter and I went to the cross-country M B C championships. They were held at U M A on Saturday, and the Winthrop boys came in third. Everybody ran their hearts out. It was so fun to be there and cheer on all the kids. The girls ran really well. Heely Williams came in second. Fortunately, they only have three girls on the cross-country team, so they don't register as a team. But I totally, I think they have regionals this Saturday. So, cross-country meets are so fun to go to, so anybody who can get out there and support them, that would be great. And that is it for me. There's no executive session, so without objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh eight. Thank you.